This conference will now be recorded.
Shannon, roll call please.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Trevio.
Here.
Commissioner Boe.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Teo?
Read the agenda. That part. By your heads and pray with me. Lord, I ask that you bring us rain, Lord. The clouds are dancing around us. They don't want to seem to just stay here. So we pray for rain, Lord. We need it badly. And we ask that you bless us with some rain, Lord. I want to thank you, Lord, for having us gather here today, Lord, and make our decisions with the city. We ask that you open our minds and make the right decision for our community, Lord. Fourth of July is coming up, Lord. We want to thank you for our nation having another birthday, Lord, and hope we continue to be one nation under God and continue to have many birthdays with this great nation, Lord, that we live under. Thank you for our troops in the field. Thank you for all our law enforcement firefighters. Everybody contributes to these United States, Lord. I thank you so much, Lord. We all thank you. And we just ask for your grace and your blessing that we all make smile every morning that we wake up. Amen.
Blessed are the leaders of the black of the United States of America. May the Republic of which is states, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Allude to the black state of New Mexico. C.S. simple, a perfect friendship among the united colors.
Thank you, thank you.
For our entertaining motion on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, let's make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Having to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion, corrections? Having none, Shannon, take your roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Boe.
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. And for the adoption of the minutes.
I can make a motion, adoption of the minutes of June 13th, 2022. Is that okay?
Any discussion, additions, corrections? During that, Shannon, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Trevio.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Boe.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. All right, moving to Commissioner Stafford's call. Shannon, would you like to start?
Please, Mayor Commissioners. The inch is just to come tomorrow to finish up evaluating our qualities. And after that, we will be staying here. Also, after the meeting, I mean, all of you can stay and sign some all of commissioners to sign some papers as well as the tag. Please don't run off.
Thanks. You're welcome. All right. Great.
Yes, I just want to say that the fire department has been meeting with the police department. And we go over the budget and we're ready to enter the terms into the system. And I do want to say one more thing to thank for this celebration.
Mark. Awesome.
That is a big accomplishment.
I'll give you a hand for that.
Chief. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners and City Manager. I'm happy to announce that a revised auto attended menu for LCCA non emergency calls has been completed. The caller will now get an all Lovington sub menu after approximately only 20 seconds as opposed to a minute and 30 seconds with the old system. Once the caller gets to the Lovington sub menu, the options will be in order. For the City of Lovington Animal Shelter during business hours, press one. For the City of Lovington Code Enforcement during business hours, press two. For the Lovington Police Department Records Evidence or Criminal Investigations Division, press three. For the Administrative Offices of the Lovington Police Department, press four. Or the Lovington Fire Department Records Division, press five. To speak with a dispatcher or law enforcement officer, press zero. And the changes should take place in the next week or so. And the office alleviates a lot of frustration. We work hard.
No, thank you. Again, chief. Thank you. So.
Yeah, no, I mean, the concerns were warranted. It's just getting all the other municipalities on board and coming up with a system for everybody.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Excellent.
I don't know of other commissioners, but actually I received another call today on it. It took, takes two and a half minutes or whatever you said to get to. And then they had to hang up and call back and go through it again. So we appreciate that.
Another week or two and it should go away. Any further questions for Chief? Our Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. So the flow testing on the hydrants, they actually started that middle of last week. So if you see them around and there's water running down the streets, that's a lot of it. What a lot of it is. I have done all the firework inspections except for one. They have not received their fireworks yet. And we have new fire testing July 1st. So this coming Friday, we have three certified, fire certified from the Wolfwood Fire Company that are testing. One is EMS as well. I've submitted a grant for some gym equipment for our second station. And then we have CRI, which is a collection agency. All I have to do is sign a contingency election agreement. Just an agreement between us and the collection agency so we can get rid of the AIM system, our old billing system that we've still been paying for. I had a quick look over it today and you said it looked good. So we can go ahead and sign and get that completely done out of our hair. Other than that, I don't believe I have anything. That stops, oh, is it 600 a month? We're 600 a month. Yes, sir. And we, in the last three years since we changed to change healthcare, we have paid $21,600 and we have only made $3,000. So that's going to save us quite a bit of money as well.
I appreciate you and Skylar taking that. I know you kept promising me a number, but I'm glad you took it and called the chief of the other financial director and got that moved forward. Thank you.
Just wanted to ask you, as far as, I know last month we talked about it as far as testing our sirens and that. What is that scheduled for?
I'm actually waiting to see what our weather is going to do. Every time I check the weather and I want to try to reschedule it, then it looks like it's going to be cloudy. And just, I mean, we go out and we check them every, the first of every month.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, can you connect the double?
Sure.
Just to make sure that when we set the alarms off that the city does here.
How else would I think to set that up? You know, could it be like, let's say, next week you get some good days? And I'm just wondering as far as letting people know.
What we try to do is we let the radio know, the newspaper know. We've let LCCA know. Of course, the hospital, all of our senior citizens. That way, they all have a heads up before when they hear that siren go off, they know. We try to give the citizens enough time. That way, it's not just a day or two and then we go off and set it off. And then we've got everybody flooding LCCA because the alarms are going off.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to add a side that we'll make sure that we put it out there with enough knowledge. Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Commissioner Boe.
As I always say, get out there and shop local. Take care of our businesses, take care of our community.
Restaurant.
We got to go out and eat too. So, yeah, whatever we can do to help our community out, help our businesses out, help our restaurants. Highly recommend it. And I know we do. And for everybody else who does too, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Rest assured, it's good. Thank you. Commissioner Gandy.
The only thing I have to comment on is Main Street. No, they're not finished with it. I've got like four or five calls. People think, are we already done? No, we're not done with it. So there's 300 plus days. I don't know why everybody thinks, just because we ran the water line, we're finished. So I don't know what, fake new or what's going on, but it seems to be the, maybe that's the one that had pee or something. Maybe it's a valve or something. Yeah, just still got some more, some more to do.
It's not the finished product?
No, 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 it better not be. So. Other than that, yeah, there's 13th. On 13th and, I love that you're dealing with, you're sitting there. So on 13th and Avenue D, there's an LED light, Victor, out of the P, of the gas company, stays on all the time. So I don't know who we need to contact on that. But that light comes on or stays on day and night. So I figured that's photo bolt out of it. Other than that, I don't have anything.
13th and D. 13th and D. Yeah. Dr. Ortiz, I'm sorry. All the lights are out on East Street. Northern Street, all the streetlights.
North.
Northeast. East.
North.
Three.
Yes.
East is the name of the street. E A S T. Or not. That's all I have. Jay?
Yes, sir. We'll be closed, city offices will be closed on Monday for July 4th. That's all right.
City Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I had the opportunity to attend the manager's conference retreat last week. So there's two items I would like to present. On one activity that we went through, we had a gentleman out of Albuquerque that presented on how to conduct meetings, rules of order and so forth. The one thing I got out of the meeting, and I know Commissioner Gandy has had this discussion with me, that we need to make sure we keep our meetings within two hours. So that was one of, that was the recommendation that the presenter made, that if your, if your governing body can keep meetings within two hours. Now, I think we're doing a pretty good job. As I spoke to other managers, sometimes they have meetings that last six, seven hours. And so I.
Just thought you said, I will be leaving. I will be leaving.
This was a handout that they gave us, a kind of a really good handout.
Was it Adam Hathaway? Was that the presenter?
Yes.
Was he not?
He's not.
It was amazing speaker.
Yeah, so, yeah, he did. So he did, he did mention that if we were interested in having him present to us, that would be great. But he didn't give us this handout. I thought this was his good handout.
He ran out of those.
Yeah, we didn't.
The other one was, we had a round table discussion. It was a tax policy. And so this one here, it's House Bill 207. Now, on this House Bill 207, it was classified as House in the Senate. It was signed by the governor. And so this bill, basically it's business to business service grocery seat. So for example, if I own a welding company in the City of Lovington, of course, if I do any business, the City of Lovington is going to get that GRT. Now, if I go out to the county and do work in the county with this new tax policy, the county will get some of that GRT now.
They get all the money already.
Yeah. And state county didn't hurt part of it.
I have to say that, it's the easiest.
And so right now, I know the City of Hobbs has issues in this because this will have a huge impact on the City of Hobbs and also the City of Albuquerque. What's happening in Albuquerque is you have businesses that are leaving Albuquerque and going to re-arrange or do work. And now Albuquerque is losing some of that GRT. And so I did meet with the mayor of Hobbs, Mr. Sam Cobb's. And we need to identify for the City of Lovington, what is that impact going to be on us? And so I met with Tracy and we're going to monitor our GRT and see how, what's going to be the fiscal impact. Now, I know there's talk about addressing this at the next, the next session. And so I met with the executive director and we plan to have our annual meeting, I think in August. And he did ask me to ask the commission, Mayor, if you're willing to attend the meeting because I know this is going to be an issue. And, but again, they're still collecting data to see what's going to be our impact on our GRT. But there is, there is a push to see if we can change this. But again, we're looking at how much GRT City Hobbs, how much City of Lovington, Carl's Bad Boys and others, community, that, yes, and also City Albuquerque. So they indicated to me that this is not a Republican Democratic issue, more of a coalition. So it's something that we just need to pay attention and see how, what's going to be that fiscal impact.
What is this? I will read it, but what does this want to do to help? Because it's still House Bill 7. What are they attempting to do?
Well, they didn't realize that the companies that go out of the jurisdiction, they didn't realize how much GRT they would lose. So what they're looking at is trying to reverse it so that the community, the municipalities do not lose that GRT. So for example, the City of Hobbs, well, they were about, let's just say, for example, $100 million from companies. But now that they're going outside of the City of Hobbs and losing part of it.
Yeah, because we're a service company.
We're a service.
Absolutely.
So I have to run to the center. Okay, so I want to give an examples, what I'm trying to do here. So let's just say, let's just say Scott has a business in Hobbs. Okay? And the way Hobbs was set up is they really, earlier in the 60s and 70s, they really generated people to charge from their point, instead of point of sale, not point of service. And so he would charge Hobbs City tax even though he went out and worked on well, ABC out here, such and such. Well, now with this will, he charges county tax and state tax. Hobbs doesn't get anything from it. So the difference between Hobbs and Lovington is Hobbs had a huge impact in oil and gas. Lots of companies, Halbert, Supper Day, all these different companies that were charging that Hobbs City tax, going out to the field, charging that, but charging the Hobbs City tax because that's where their own base was. Lovington's accountants looked at things a little differently. And you could do either general code or whatever. And you could do point of sale if you were inside the sea limits, or you could do general, which was your point of service. And a majority of the businesses here did point of service because they were on the outer edge of Lovington anyway. So we don't have that large of impact when oil and gas is up and down. Because if you look at the flow chart, it doesn't change that much. But what drives stuff up is when people buy tons of parts at Napa, they're going on truck. That stays right inside the city. And so that's what kills a lot of these other communities. Now that the one or two businesses that were strumming something up, we just now, because you're selling out here, they're trying to capture that revenue from the internet sales. And in theory, it's up their system.
Oh, absolutely.
But yeah, that's just, in Lovington's, in, from what I can see, we don't really have enough businesses that are charging Lovington's C tax except for the ones that solely sell services inside the sea limits. Outside of that, everybody can charge the county tax. And so Lovington doesn't, that market doesn't fluctuate as much. We just need more businesses inside the corporate sea limits that charge that tax, you know, for services.
No, I understand what House Bill 7. I'm just wondering, what does this, what is it attempting to correct? Did they present on that?
What they're trying to do is just reverse it. That's the way we were.
Well, I understand. They talked, I've heard it three times now, that this was an oversight, a technical oversight. And I said, no, it's not because, just because now that the service companies are doing the service in the county, the county only makes an additional eighth of a percent, 0.125%. And that's because they get to assess, I believe it's an environmental fee in addition to the normal 0.25% that they get on everything the city does. So the county didn't make out. What happened was the state got the 1.7%, or no, excuse, not 1.7, it's 2.25%. That's called the local share.
Okay.
The cities, the, the state graciously at this time allows the cities to have that. But even that is in peril because the state can reverse that. It is literally gifted many years ago, but it's still under state control. And they can actually take that back. But the, this local share, because the service is now in the county, county doesn't get to get that local share. The state, the state absorbed all of this extra money is really what happened. So I doubt that, I truly doubt that it was a technical oversight, but the outcry has caused, caused them to look at that as being reality.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, my stand for any questions that the mayor, commissioner have.
I just wanted to add to that. That's why it's important that our businesses have CS, CRS numbers here.
Absolutely.
It's very important. So I brought that up a few times. So I wanted to ask, I know we were looking for IT personnel. Have we found anybody yet? How are we doing on that search?
We have Mr. Damian.
He was here last commission.
Oh, okay.
So he's on board and he's, he actually was helping us today set up. And our goal by bringing him on board, we have, we work with SWAT. And I know and correct me if I'm wrong, we're still then. So when you call SWAT, they usually charge just a phone call, about $100. And so what we're looking at is if anyone in the City of Lovington had any technical issues, computer issues, to get hold of Damian first. And if he can troubleshoot or fix any problems that we have, then he will do that. And then he will be the person that will contact SWAT. Our goal by bringing him on board is to cut our bill in half. But again, let's see how that goes as we move forward.
Yes. General name, Damian?
Damian Gomez.
Gomez.
And he has gone out to several buildings and fixed a lot of different things. Printers, troubleshooting with different systems and stuff. He's helped a lot.
It's good.
He is still good.
Anything further? City Mayor. Matt Boe.
Okay, so yeah, Main Street is not. The water line portion of the project is complete. They got the, they got the detour paving to put over where they cut up there on Main, just north of Avenue D. That tie in to that main line will not happen until they get to the intersection of Main and Deep with the storm sewers. Because I don't want to tear up the intersection several different times. So when they're coming up with the storm sewer system, that will be when that water line is actually connected to all the new stuff. I mean, it's connected to water right now, but then it'll be a flow through and all the old lines be, so. The, I know you wanted us to make some kind of simple poster, but we've been talking with the constructors about it and it's just not. Because they're phasing, they have 18 phases, but each phase has like six portions in it.
Yeah.
So it's not so easy just to say, because what they do is with the storm drain, they'll come in and they'll do, like right now, they got the 850 feet block. And they will go in, they'll do the storm drain, they have to do all the city utilities across that area, go go ahead and then they have to do the curb and sidewalk. And then they have to move people and do paving and then move people back. And then they're going to go and do another 850 foot, do the same thing there in those different phases to get all done. And then when that two 850 feet pieces are done, they go to the north side. And it'll be another two phases of 850 foot with their storm drain, pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, lighting, all of it. So. So by the time they, you know, switch back and forth and do all these independent phases, then you'll have a completed section when they're done as they go on further north. It will take a while. They're going to be here for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Just saying.
Start writing them down.
But the finished product will not be until after they got all the.
They're here again.
Did you have any more questions on that? I mean, they are starting to start on the storm drain portion of it. They did have a whole crew get down with COVID. So they did not have their utility crew. So the storm drain portion was actually on hold because that was the three that got sick. So they were a little behind on that. Other than that, they're still trucking along. Imagine they're moving along, they order their water meters. As you can see, they're.
They're firing.
That's our fire suppression is going in. And once they finish that plumbing and it gets all the inspections from, because fire suppression has to be inspected by the state. So once they get that inspected, they'll be able to cover all that up. I'm hoping, having any backup.
Anything further? Yes, sir.
Regarding the gum street, the truck bypass. Is the city responsible as far as for signage on there? It's been brought to my attention that when you're going down gum street, there's no signage saying where the truck bypass is. And people have gone past it numerous times and was asked to see if there was something that I could.
So it depends on where on gum street you want the signage. Because there are portions of gum street that we do do the signage on. And then there's points that county does.
Right.
So it kind of depends on where you're.
Something they give them. Anything is better than nothing at all. And right now, there's nothing at all.
For the.
As far as 17th Street, where they're going to be turning?
Okay. I will get with County Road Department and see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Anything further? Patrick.
Nothing new since the last meeting. I got bumped up on a jury trial schedule, so that, that took all my free time on at least dealing with that issue with the railroad. But I say any questions, if you have any.
I was going to bring up the railroad again because my phone has been going.
Greatly.
And apparently there was something on, we loaded out highway, that was there too.
Yes. And I, it's my understanding, they actually came out and fixed it. Doesn't look like permanent fix, but it's better because we had spikes sticking up.
Right.
Like I made last week.
Right. So.
DOT and they called the railroad.
I see you had it out. But anything that you. On the highway, main highway also. So.
Yes.
As I said, they're both getting bad. I hate to see an accident. I hate to see somebody get hurt or the last thing I want, that's why I keep bringing it up. Well, my concern is personal. I don't want to see somebody get hurt, somebody with little kids in a vehicle, something like that happen. So last thing we'll see.
Okay.
Well, Patrick, you got a question? I'm sure Commissioners Wyatt and I were, this was our first memorandum from yourself. And since it is basically, as all commissioners, and to have it brought up in the old meeting would be the appropriate place to do it. This was your memorandum on discussions outside of closed session.
Yes.
Having read it, and like I said, it was our first one to receive, I just want to get a little clarification if I could. Basically, my first question is, I think it's self explanatory that whatever we discuss in closed session, is there in closed session for a reason? It's going to pertain to sensitive, if that is the correct term to use, items or, or issues or whatever?
Well, I think like a good example, let's say we were going to buy a piece of property. And we went into closed session and that's an option, like a luxury for the city to go outside of open session into closed. And so what's supposed to happen is we can discuss, you know, we may be very interested in that piece of property or we may not. And so if we did that in open session, for example, then the seller is going to know, is the price going up or not? And so that's one of the reasons. And you can take a look at historically why we go in the closed session. You know, it's generally for an issue of litigation, one is actually filed and threatened, or sale or purchase of real property or for personnel matters and so on. So the, the purpose of it is to allow counsel and whoever else goes in based on the factual situation to, to talk about that and to talk about it in a setting where it's not open to the public or, I know.
I believe it would be reasonable to assume that the actual correctness or incorrectness of the, of anything that was. of anything that was stated outside of that would not, would not reduce the I can say punishment, because there's really not any punishment. It would not lessen the malfeasance of the act. I mean, in other words, I'll give an example and I've already prompted the chief, please everyone, this is a hypothetical, but it's always going to achieve two things. If we in closed session were to discuss items pertaining to the Lovington Police Department that possibly we had looked at turning over to the Sheriff's Department. LCCA is a good example in something along that line. And we were in closed session discussing that we are going to disband part of the the responsibilities of Lovington Police Department. And you asked the county to take over those. And then I were to the next day somehow say wrongly that we are going to disband the Lovington Police Department and give it over to the Sheriff's Department. And I bring that up because somehow that got out there and it's come about and there's never been any discussions on anything along that line. And there's certainly nothing, no intent by this commission that that's going to happen. But the fact that I misconstrued it doesn't lessen the fact that I shouldn't have said anything along the lines.
Well, there's a couple of things. One is so, it's a hypothetical. We're just making this up. But if it were something that we wanted to go in a closed session, we couldn't because it's not threatened litigation, personnel matters. But we set that aside. Yeah, there's not, there's not a rule that anybody violates for discussing what's in closed session in open. So there's not a law or a rule anybody violates. But it's just not a good idea.
The trust of the organization.
What you talk about outside, whether it's accurate or not, still doesn't change that. It's just a matter of like everybody, you know, because we go in closed session, there's some things I say I don't want. And they're like, same things that you guys say also, because we have that opportunity. So we're buying a piece of property and I might say, we don't need that. Someone else might say, yeah, we do. Here's why. So it doesn't necessarily, you know, no rule against violence. It's just not, not good.
It's not good.
I think you better state that again about five more times, something we'll say hypothetical.
I know, that's the reason I'm tomorrow. Oh, no, no. And I had pre-horned him that I was going. But anyway, yeah, all right.
Yeah, that's right. And so it's, it's one of the things that is always difficult because, you know, but the fact that we talk about things in closed session or the fact that I send you the memo, I wouldn't want you talking about the specific advice I give. But it's a fair subject to ask questions about. So, you know, you can ask that question, sir.
All right, any questions? All right, well, thank you. Appreciate your work. All right. That was pretty much all of it. So I guess we will be moving on to public comment. And this is a time that I invite members of the public to come up, state your name, discuss or present what you want to have. Try to limit to three minutes so that we can get out of here in our two hours or less, as they've stated. But anyway, it's your time. It is not a debate session, please. If a member of the commission wants to ask you a question, they, they will do so. Other than that, just state it and we will listen and move on from there. But anyone, I'd say just if you have something to say, come on up, we'll get to this as quickly as possible. Okay. Nobody seems, I told you. All right, so we'll now move on to non-action. All right, well, since our last meeting, I had this added to our non-action discussion. And I am so stated to our new financial director that this is not about her. This is about our position with the finance director. Our position on the finance director position. Weird way to say that, but. So Dr. Martinez, this being the second time that this has occurred in my chamber. In the first one, we had a resignation as the fire chief position and we inserted our current fire chief as interim. And my question starts with upon receiving your email stating that you had promoted. I'm sorry, Tracy, what's your last name? Espinosa to that position. I would like to just address why not interim or what you're thinking on that particular promotion or designation? And, and the reason I say that, and I have not discussed it with her, it's not in my position to discuss it with her. I pulled and had copies of our last postings for that position. And they were just dating past those out. And this is all not to question Ms. Espinosa's value or doing, or performance in the job. Because first of all, I appreciate what she's already accomplished. But my fear is that she, like her predecessor, has such an enormous task in front of her. And I want to be fair to her. She's a long time city employee. And I don't want in four to six months to have a discussion on her job performance when the enormity of her job, of her job. At this point, it would be my opinion that we could hire the best financial directors that money could buy. Put them in this position and they would be severely overwhelmed. And I've stated that with our previous one also. We all, I agree that we have a tremendous task in front of her and we are moving forward in that direction. And the difficulty for one person to accomplish that in any kind of a quick or an expedient procedure is going to be very difficult. One, she's got to learn a lot more than what she's been exposed to with her tenure at, with the city. I kind of looked at what we had posted, when we posted for that position. And the different items, one of them being tonight, it will be within the, the audit. These are all things that fall under her direction now. And I had been hurt, there's no way out of it. So I appreciate that she did. So now it comes down to, as I stated at our last meeting, it's on you. Okay, so my question on this is, how are you going to develop a plan that we can now follow? That's going to achieve all of the things that we've been trying to work and be able to help her and reach out to us or any of the other resources that we have to help her accomplish that. It's going to be extremely difficult as it was. And I, I know it's a lot to ask and I'm not asking for an answer right now. But what is your plan as to be able to kind of give us an idea when we're going to achieve some of these? Now, again, I give her full credit because I asked her today, are we prepared to turn in and finalize the budget? She stated that earlier and I wholeheartedly, she gave me a good answer. At our last meeting, the previous financial director had basically said that she was going to have all of the fund balances done that following week. Obviously, I'm not expecting that from our current director. But we, in order to move forward in all of our projects and all of our concerns, and you and I both, now we've said in so many meetings, again, we have a lot of concerns, we've got to move forward. And knowing our financial position is essential, not just key, it's essential to know so that we can then determine the funding that we have to proceed in emergency situations, the funding that we have in normal situations, if we are having any of those normal situations. But how are we going to help her? That's really what my question is. And, you know, what have you been able to, I know it's been a short, it's only been a couple of weeks. But we've got to be able to account to all of our entities, whether it's the lodgers tax, our, our creditors or whoever. We've got to give them some idea of what our, what our financial position is. You know, I know that's a lot, there's a million questions in there. I would just say, kind of tell them, walk us through where we are, where we're going and how we're going to get there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, due to potential litigation, my recommendation, and I know Patrick's going to chime in on this. I would prefer that we go into executive session and closed session to discuss this issue, if that's possible.
In our next meeting, we'll just put that out as
I think going to what, what you're saying, Mayor, is that, you know, the priorities have been met. I mean, and, and, you know, Ms. Kennedy was only here six months, but in my mind, the priorities were being met. We're, we're, first of all, reconciling the banks, the number, that was priority. Getting our quarter reports done, that was priority. Getting a budget done, that was priority. Finished this audit, that was a part. Four priorities were being completed within the last six months with her and Ms. Kennedy and the rest of the staff.
And we also had to have our procurement officer.
Yeah, and we had to get a premier. So in reality, I think our accomplishments have been great in the last six months. Because prior to that, we didn't have a treasurer, we didn't have a city manager for almost a ten month. And for them to come forward, and I know Tracy took the lead, and I know Dion's here, and she was in communication with her on a daily basis. And, and also Dion, I think she preferred Tracy over our last treasurer, you know, because the communication was there. And I think that's the key is always communication with the board of commission as well as staff and, and, and state. But I, I think we've done leaps and bounds. Yes, there's a lot of, I know Commissioner Bolt was very concerned about, but he needs a financial statement. I think we all want that. Sometimes everything else priority, right now reconciling the bank statements. Before you get a financial statement, you got to do that. Tracy has just announced that we've got it. But it wasn't just nine days worth. It was prior to Gary, because prior to Gary, it wasn't done, prior to Gary. Because when I walked in, it was six months that weren't done prior to him leaving. So you imagine the six months before him leaving, he didn't do it. And then after that, catch up. So it's been rough. I mean, it's terribly been rough. It's not, and I know that you're new mayor and Commissioner. It is, but I feel that in the last six months, we've done tremendously. And I think the financial statement will come because now we got the books reconciled. And it took CPA, I lost, I lost criticism to come in here and do all the books. And he had a lot of findings and had a lot of questions and Ms. Dion right there, sitting right there, she had a lot of questions. So, you know, getting all, you know, the auditors asking for, for, for feedback. The CPA that we hired is asking for feedback. But the end result right now, we've got the budget done, we've got our quarter reports done, we've got our books reconciled. I think what else can you ask for in the last six months? I think it looks pretty good. And I think we'll be seeing a financial statement. I think it's going to be pretty good. But, but I also agree that, you know, we need to lay out a plan on, on achieving our objectives in the next six months to ensure that we don't go back to where we were over a year ago. Because I'm sure we'll see that again. I don't think the city can handle that, that punch again.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I would recommend that our next meeting, we go into executive session to discuss this issue. That would be my recommendation, so that I can explain the specifics. I don't want to be in public meeting where there's certain things that we've discussed. And I know I have to speak to Patrick, but Mr. Mayor, that would be my recommendation that we have discussion in executive session. If you don't mind.
And like I said, I just want to see a plan put together. While I agree that we have accomplished many items that were in a rear team. The only way that that was done was we brought in outside consultants. We cannot afford to continue to do that. And I'm, I'm going to state my case here. You know, in less than six months, Fero and Vera was here. Their, their first principle was to get us prepared or help us get the twenty I want to excuse me, stuff is the twenty twenty-one audit finished, accomplished, which we did. That was their principle. It also helped Ms. Espinosa begin, helped her learn how to do the reconciliations. And she took, I know the last two weeks, brought us from March to here. I know she had done the majority of the previous months and so she was with their help. She was coached and she's now proficient more so than anybody that we have on staff. At the same time, we don't need to be hiring consultants to help us get current. So if, in that period, they think they finished their original proposal, which cost us about sixty thousand. We then put them on task for another project to help us with an additional portion that we were needing. And judging from what we've seen, we, I think you said a two month or whatever it was, you know, we're going to spend another twenty to thirty thousand minimum, because I've already seen the first bill is in our package tonight. So we're looking at in six, so six or so months, we've spent eighty thousand. Okay, in addition with the, the financial director's salary, we're going to spend a hundred and fifty or more. And my question is, if that's the case, the we have seen that the amount of work needed in the financial area is, I mean, there's a list right here that we've added to that list. Do we need to consider expanding that, the personnel in there? Because we obviously are spending that much anyway, because it's better to do these in-house. Now, I know Ms. Willby in one of our talks said that it was good to have a CPA firm help us. And I agree with that, but have them basically on staff, no, that's the direction we want to go. So in addition, and we will, we will finalize this. Just want to kind of get some direction for the best way for the city to proceed. So that in a few months, when we reevaluate where we have currently, or where we are at that point, where we are now. I want it to be fair to anyone that's in that position, that the goals were realistic, the timelines were realistic, the deadlines and everything else. And then the commission feels confident that we're going to be able to work on numbers that are current, if that's the right word, as, as possible. You know, we're always going to be a month behind, but being a year behind. And I, and I'm not criticizing the past or anything else. But you and I have had this conversation many times. Being, being in limbo as to where you're at, the barely inhibits the, the moving forward of any of our product in any of our departments or whatever. And so we can't be dodging time. We can't be dodging a lot of the things that occurred that kept us from proceeding forward. So again, I want to see the financial department able to handle all of this. And with all of that, I want us to be able to do as much in-house as we can and staff and prepare and give them the software, the facilities and everything else.
I think going back to what you said, it is going to cost us to train. I mean, we went through three, I mean, two interviews. And the candidates we had, we knew were going to need training. So it's still going to cost us training because it's not a regular CPA that you're looking forward to. It's a state municipality account and they're far better from few. And we had our two interviews that we did, where we lost our first one and our second one. Qualifications, how many, how many people know municipality? How many people know the state but that are out there available? That's going to move to Lovington for 70,000 and not going to find it. And so we're going to have to train our staff. We're going to have to invest in our staff and so forth. Another note on financials. This board makes decisions based on what's presented with our finance director. We don't get behind our computer every day. We don't get go there and get in your business. So we have a lot of trust in our finance department to give us numbers. And that's how we made our decisions in the past. And that's how we need, you know, we're going to make our decisions in the future. We have to have that trust, knowing that our treasurer is going to give us the right numbers. Because previously, we're given the wrong numbers and we're making decisions based on something that we assumed that were, that was presented to us was correct, but it wasn't. And then it took this COVID and everything else to find out that it was a mess out there. And we were assuming that we're not numbers we're supposed to be getting. We weren't. And we're making decisions off bad numbers. And it wasn't because we, it was because we didn't have the right staff in place. But that's another thing. We just, we're not going to be behind a computer. I mean, numbers you give us, the numbers Tracy gives us, recommendations you give us is how we're moving forward, how we're making decisions. And I found out the hard way is that the numbers that were given us prior to the resonations was all junk. I'll say it's junk. That's, that's another area. But training is going to be there, it's going to have to be trained. It's all.
Anyone else? Bring this to our action now. Floor is open for Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2022-060, acceptance of the June 30th, 2021 audit report and financial statements for the City of Lovington. I'll say, okay, it was mostly the second. This item, I am going to introduce, you weren't here before. I can't, I sought you out. I didn't know what, I asked commissioner, I said, is she here? I was going to come over and introduce, but anyway, Ms. Willby would feel approached.
All right, thank you. And I really have our, I'm sitting here while y'all are discussing the position of finance director. I will tell you that I've been a consultant when you're being so long and long. And I find push up hard for you to hire a consultant. Then in the comments that I have to make are, you can't hire anyone, sorry. It is such a unique position unless you steal one way from another municipality. And my opinion is that what you need is someone who's very trained. And my conversation with Ed was Tracy is very trained. We're going to get some. So don't give up on her. And she does have a whole depending job. And we have to support her in every way. And show up the money for Ed because Ed's going to teach her what to do. And she's going to push it out to everyone. And that's going to solve the problem. Now, he can't be a permanent staff member and should. Usually when you're, I go in and consult, I give about three months. And in some time, that's necessary each month for a year. And that's your timeline. At the end of that year, you should see a significant improvement and you need a significant improvement in your books and records. I'll pop down my audit. Thank you for having me tonight. I will tell you that you did receive an unqualified opinion. That is the good opinion. The second opinion you could have received was seriously considered is qualified opinion, which means that everything is okay except for something. And your something that's really presented a problem for me is are your fixed assets. Here a million dollars. And I have a real hard time giving you a same opinion during your next question. And I hope that you continue to work with Ed and pull this in the line. So my thoughts are, I believe my audited numbers are more accurate than your city's records. So therefore I can give you an unqualified opinion. But someone, and that someone would have to be Ed, with a lot of help from staff. Are going to have to go out there and find the missing assets. Should be on the depreciation schedule that may go about a minute. Whenever I first audited your fixed assets, there were deletions, additions, et cetera. It was very wrong. I have no doubt that you're going to have to get some old depreciation schedules and look for a building. Because it's the, whatever's wrong, whatever's missing is going to be something there. And that's going to take some research. That's, that's a concern that I have. But I was able to give you an opinion and in doing that, it's really important that I don't discount. Because you can lose under because you don't have an opinion. So I did you a favor and I want you to know that I want you to understand what a serious situation you are in. I don't expect much improvement for the year that's about. There will be bankrupts done, which is will be the first time in. Ed did them for me through June. So I appreciate it so very much. Can't do anything without it. From there, we'll move on to the next thing, which has to, we have to address. Okay, all right, thinking is covered. In addition to that, we just have a lot of findings. And I'm not going to go through each one. They are public and they're safe on your website. You're going to, you're going to read those. I hope that you can read it and understand what went wrong and why it went wrong and how to fix it. And every time I'm telling you how to fix your findings. So if you want to dive into that, take a copy or go to your website and download the audit and see what you can do. It's going to take a year. It's going to take a year for you to make some kind of improvement. Beyond that, we saw a defined in your revenue. It was, you had really broke here in 21, we'll blame it on COVID. I blame everything on COVID, by the way. Your, I don't, I don't like issuing a lot. And I'm sorry that happened to you, your books and records just were not something that I. So I again appreciate Ed coming through and giving me some records that were reconciled that I would at some point just start process. So an audit is, in these financials, I actually wrote these and I'm going to disclose them in your report. But they're based on all of your records. I can't change your numbers. So I can, I can recommend journal entries that you should make in your books. And if you agree to them, then I can make that journal entry to your numbers. So you understand these are yours. And my job as an auditor is just to determine if these numbers are fairly present. And very present, fairly presented is a range. And I determined that my fund with your revenues. For example, if I'm auditing payroll in the general fund, I have a range of error I can set. And when I audit payroll and it falls within that, that range, I stop auditing and it's fairly presented. Then I move on to repair. And I'll look at your repairs. Again, I audit repairs and I move until I'm within this range. So I audit for fair presentation, not perfection. I don't audit for embezzlement. I don't audit for a lot of things that people think I do. We don't. We, we want these financials to be good, accurate and fairly presented. So you talked about whether or not you can depend on them. Do we, you can depend on these, these numbers that are, that are in this report? You guys have any questions? Because I don't want to exceed my, I think you want to. And I know in the rest of this year, it's an important thing.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, could you elaborate on the fixed asset? You mentioned the million dollars and where we went. What's the issue with City of Lovington and how can we fix that?
Okay, if you read mine, if you read my mind, it will tell you the solution. You're going to have to literally go back to some old depreciation schedules and compare them to your current schedule. And you need to focus on high dollar tickets. It has to be a building if God can delete it. And, and what I saw the previous finance director do was literally if this particular asset did not be found. And in one case, I found comparing years of depreciation schedules, a vehicle, for example, that was just deleted. You can't delete something, you have to dispose of it correctly. And it wasn't, it was deleted and it was added in another department. And it, it was depreciated over and started, it was a fully depreciated vehicle. It was deleted, added to another department, same cost, and it begins to depreciate. Now, that's just one example. And I probably have been using different examples of items that were not handled correctly. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to solve that. And that's been cramping and has to occur. Tyler has some, your software has some safeguards. In fact, those safeguards had to be overruled to have done what was done. So I couldn't ever get from what I, I couldn't get from the previous audit before I started my audit to agree with any, neither did it. He thought I had done a really bad job. Obviously, he kept us, what can you push him, what I got to do with that? And he said, you know, we can solve it. And that's true second. So we can, did I answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Where, when your million dollars out, it has to be in something done. So I would start by taking inventory of that. And then go to your next hot dollar. Usually it's not a fire engine, but our engine's a hot dollar. We look for new things first. It's a good time to clean up your depreciation schedule. If you have any items less than 5,000, they actually can be disposed of. And if you find things that you don't have, dispose of them, but do it correctly and clean it up. And I will adjust to you once we all inside get your numbers. But again, I'm not, all these numbers, when I started doing audit, I did audit the additions. I get somewhat audit the deletions. So we may find some things there that are awesome, shouldn't be deleted. I mean, you know.
Mr. Steel, do you think that that's in like a three-year period, like from the previous auditor? Because the previous auditor quarters told us the same thing, that our assets, our fixed assets or whatever are off. And then when you took over, so it has to be in the last two years or three years that our accounting department made, they merged or did whatever they did. So you think that's about the timeframe or we're going to have to go further back?
I would think within the last five years. So if you know, this is, this was year two, about to start year three for me, probably two.
Two years prior to you.
And I certainly couldn't tie that, the audit, depreciation. We never had to go back. If it were a small enough, depreciation is, so we talked about that range. Depreciation has even a larger range, which is an estimate. But the cost of the assets should, should not be off. A million dollars is certainly well outside that range. Did you sleep?
No, I haven't.
Do you need to click the joke?
No, restaurants close pretty quick around here.
Dion. One last note. To have myself, I want to say thank you on this last audit. And working with Tracy and working with staff, I remember one person made that phone call, talked about Ed coming on board. I thought, man, I was worried, but we made it through, you know, I think the city made it through. I unmodulate, I'll take it, you know. Yeah, I'm taking it all day. But I appreciate the staff, the board of commissioners, as well as you and Ed that got us to this point.
You know, I really had no hope that we would get it done without.
That's scary, it was scary.
I can't audit my own numbers. So that's one issue, but I can't come in and reconcile in my entire year. But thanks, thanks. I cannot do it as a lover. And I knew you did, you're very right. Bankrupts have not been done for a very long time prior to. And I can show you where the previous finance director was not reconciled.
I will say, sure, Ben.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion on the second floor for the acceptance of the 2021 audit report, financial statements. Shannon, if you have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Damon?
Yes.
Mr. Pio?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Okay.
I make the motion to approve of the ordinance 592, amending Title II Administration of Personnel, Division II Municipal Officers, Chapter 2.12, City of Missioners, Section 2.12080, Rules of Debate.
Second. Motion second. Jalen, would you like to tell what this is?
Yes, sir. We actually went out for approval for the legal notice back in April. But due to other needs for the city, we did not come back and approve it. But this will just approve it. And it's actually adopting the current rules of, or current rules of order. And if you guys want a copy, I have copies and a hard copy will be kept in the city clerk's office as well. But as city manager, Martinez mentioned earlier, it adopts the most current rules of order. That way we can know how to follow during commission meetings and everything.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Questions? No, Shannon, roll call, please.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pio?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion for resolution 2022-061, approval of roadway for Lee County Electric at the Shepperill Park.
Second.
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 Conflict.
Thank you. Did I figure it out? So much over here shaking my head.
Mayor, Richard, so we say roadway. What has happened is, of course, with the overflow drainage from the store retention pond, they're having to move some electrical poles out of the way because it is now directly where the overflow would be, which is not a safe place for electrical be. So we just have to grant this new easement for them to move that one pole. The other poles are actually the bagpipes and not them are being moved on to getting easements from other. This is the only ones we have.
Thank you, Michelle. I have a motion in the second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, Shannon, roll call vote, please.
Mr. White?
Thanks.
Mr. Gane?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Next time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022-062, approval of missile.
Yeah.
Yep, that word artillery program cooperative agreement for Jackson Avenue design.
We have a motion in the second for. Says item, Ms. Ball.
Yeah, this is the map we put in for. We did receive the grant. So this is to design Jackson Avenue to include sidewalks, actually widening Jackson because right now we go down Jackson. There's cars parked on both sides. One being if we can go go and have a rip, that's it. So we're going to try to get that designed. So we could work on then getting a grant text construction done. But we also in the design process, we wanted to look at the infrastructure, which is the water and sewer lines in that area to include that in the design of this project.
My statement on that was, and I know you received word today. There was a page missing, which was items three and four. Because my question was, is this just design? I know it's not enough to do it, but that was gone. And then we found out it wasn't in your submittal. But I understand that we have an updated correct submittal for this resolution. Is that correct? Maybe you didn't get the memo.
I did, but I was swishing all day.
If you look, items three and four are missing.
Shannon, do you have? I think it was the ones that. Shannon, that's the correct. Read it on the back. The one that read, the one that you gave me.
Uh huh.
Was printed on the back. Maggie, please, Dusty and the.
It all has been the problem.
But my question is, it's just design.
Yes.
This is just the.
It is just design. It is not for the construction of it. It is for the design of the construction.
And the city's matching part of it was 25%, which is about $21,000.
Yes.
Any further discussions? Okay. Dean Adam, Shannon, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gane?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
All right, on the next item, I asked that whoever makes this motion that we kind of follow the, the resolution and make your motion using names to fill a position instead of choices.
Well.
Because I lost it.
How many positions are there? Six, nine, three. Need to just three. Fill three.
We have interest in two, and then we have two of them.
Could you want a motion?
That's our motion. So yeah, floor is open for a motion.
I make a motion for Resolution 2022-063, approval of Parks Recreation Board appointments for Mr. Griffin, Mr. Price, probably.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second for the appointment on this board. Any further discussion? Okay. Shannon, roll call vote.
So you're making July point, yellow crews, surprising grids. Are you ready?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Gane?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022-064, approval of fiscal year 23 professional service agreement for Lee County Museum. Second.
We have any discussion? We pretty much covered it from the, from the museum last meeting. But yes.
I just have a suggestion covering all four. I don't know if you want me to bring it up on every single one. I'd like to possibly adopt the city's code of conduct and dress code as part of their agreement. This is an expectation for the group because they are representing the city.
The, the discussion of that would be great for all four. But on each one, we will have to.
Right. So.
We have to amend.
Just to know that.
I mean, I make the motion with that amendment, but in each one, that is the direction that we choose to go.
Any further discussion on this? Do you want to kind of state those? Do you, or is there any questions from the commission?
You know, I, I agree with Liz. But back being is, are we overstepping our boundaries factors on that? Asking them to follow our code of conduct on that? Because they are, they are. Yes. They're. City entities. Yes, I know what we're doing is just providing the funding and then requiring them to follow the code of conduct. And that's, I think, isn't that their board members should have their own policies, procedures in place and. Fully. I'm just saying, are we?
As a courtesy, you know, as part of their professional agreement because they are representing us as the city.
So I think when you take a look at, let's just say, for example, the Lee County Museum, and we have the scope of services. It's possible to put something in there if, if the council, the commission wanted it. You know? I don't think we could call them up right now and say, hey, well, this is our policy on dress code. We expect you to enforce that. If you want to put it into the agreement and they want to agree to it, that's certainly something that they could do. I think it would just take a little bit of discussion back and forth and see if that's something. They may be willing to do it. They may say, no, that's not something we're willing to do because of X, Y, and Z. They may have their own code. They may have their own for. So it wouldn't be a situation where we're prevented from asking if they would do it. But I don't know what would happen. Then you go ahead and ask and they say, that's a deal breaker for us. Or, you know, maybe we'll do part of that. So you could ask, just like anything else in here. You know, where we say Lee County Museum will provide four concerts to the public. Maybe we want five, maybe they want three. It's just part of that discussion. The points they consider.
Dr. Martinez, you, I'm assuming that you have reached agreements with all of the entities and they have agreed to the contracts as presented. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor members of the commission, I know that we had a meeting with EDC. That was an issue. And I did speak with Isabel and with Motta. And my recommendation was 35,000 across the board. And so that discussion took place. There was, there was a few issues, items within the contract that we discussed briefly, but that's the extent. The concern was the amount of money.
Okay, so I guess if we're going to approve a resolution for this agreement, my, my question is, have they already agreed? I mean, have they already basically agreed that we passed this? They're in agreement that that's the way it is? Or that we're just going to stay in that's the way?
Mr. Mayor members of the commission, my recommendation is to state that this is how it is. It's going to be 35,000 across the board. And we'll go from, go from there. Now, if there's any issues with specifics, I can have that conversation with them. Okay, nothing, mayor. My concern is, since you had no discussion, discuss, discussion with them commissioner, this has to green pull. I don't know if it would be advisable to go ahead and pass a resolution because they may say no and then come back to the board. Do we need to table all for the resolution? And if we agree to bring this as part of the package, we need to present that to them and have their board discuss and see if they agree upon. Because right now they agreed on what was being given them. You guys debated it, probably went back for us for approval. Now we're adding to it. So in reality. That would have to be, Mr. Mayor members of the commission, the code of conduct, dress code is added, that's the discussion I would have to meet. Yeah, so why, we really don't need to be approving this. Not if we're gonna add more items to it because we still got to get them to, to go along with it. That's what I'm saying. I think it's unfair unless we just say approve and then they just deny. I don't know.
Well, I, I guess the first question is, we have a motion that opens us up. Correct, but and we have a second. And so I think the thing to do would be to discuss that open motion and discuss the issue that Ms. White brought. Commissioner White, sorry. I usually go by first names, so anyhow. And, and see if it passes or not. Because I think that would set the issue for us. I would hate to, if, if we're gonna give a vote and say, yeah, that's really important. We need to add this to the contractual terms. Then I think, you know, we go back and negotiate, see what each one of these entities has to say. But if there's a second discussion and a vote and it passes without that, depending on how the mission vote, then I don't know if it would be necessary to hold anything up. So my, my recommendation would be discuss it and see what kind of vote we get on it. And that'll tell us what the commission wants to see, whether they want that included or not. And then we can go from there. Okay.
All right, so motion in the second is part of the approval of this resolution. At this. Any further discussion? Shannon, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mr. White? No. Mr. Gane?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Based on that, yes. All right. Okay, floor is open for the next.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022-065, approval of. Do what? 065, approval of fiscal year 23 professional service agreement in the Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
All right, you have a motion. Second on the approval of this resolution discussion.
I think they're doing a good job, heading in the right direction. Mr. Bo, when I went to ribbon cutting, I was excited, had a little fireworks at the end. Chief was there. So I, I, and she showed us a lot of new things that they're, they're coming with. And I really liked the time, the, the rest of the council. I really enjoyed the event. It was magic. It was good.
I think you've started the ambassadors again.
Yes, yes. Strongly recommended.
Again, can we revisit it with code of conduct and dress code? I'm not, I'm just doing it as a group as a whole. I'm not picking on anyone.
Okay. Motion in second for approval of this resolution. Any further discussion? Okay. Shannon, roll call. I'm sorry. Stay.
White?
No.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gane?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022-067, approval of fiscal year 23 professional service agreement with London, EDC. Second.
Okay, may I motion? I'm standing in second on.
66.
Hold on. Oh, Main Street, I'm sorry.
Main Street.
Mayor. We're going to make it up. Make the motion we passed Resolution 2022-066, approval of fiscal year 23 professional service agreement for London, Main Street.
Second. Okay. I have a motion in the second on for approval of this resolution discussion.
Same thing, dress code. And I.
Agreed.
Well, you were gonna bring this up on the other.
Well, I forgot again.
Okay, EDC is now in their own home with their own utilities and internet and phone and all. And so we're gonna address some of the costs that. But you already passed the chamber.
I'm talking about Main Street.
Correct. I know. We're on Main Street, yes. Basically, the discussion was going to be if they, we stay in the, in the contract that effectively they're in a city owned building that we provide either internet, phone, utilities, whatever. However, one of, one of the entities that would be visiting doesn't have that. So I think we may have removed that from that contract. But the, the giving of those services is based entirely that they are in one of the city owned buildings. Kind of already passed the chamber. But they hallow in the same facility that London to Main Street does. So just be aware that if they were to decide to move into a different location, that they may be responsible, even though our contract states that, that we would give them internet and utilities that we would need to revisit that and make an amendment on the contract that forces our revision.
Mayor, you suggested that, that for EDC, we add additional funding.
No, 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 I am not suggesting that. I am stating that because they're not in, we're not paying their internet or whatever over there. And if Main Street and the chamber were to decide they wanted to move to their own buildings, that we don't, we're not held liable for the extension of utilities to that building. But it's kind of a moot point.
Yeah.
So I have a motion in the second on the, on the approval of Main Street service agreement. And rip. Any further discussion? Shannon.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gane? Mr. Trillo? Mr. Gane?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. White? No. Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, mayor, commission, I'd like to make a motion that we pass Resolution 2022-067, approval of fiscal year 23 professional service agreement for EDC.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry. For the approval of the professional service agreement for Love to EDC. Any discussion? The normal one?
Yeah.
Shannon, roll call.
Commissioner Danny?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner White? No. Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Ron.
Yes. All right. Next time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022-068 approval of LITA funding for graphical information system software project.
I have a motion and second. Evelyn is not here. Did she give you?
Yes, so this was actually a project that we started in May 2017. It was a three-year project. We never came back in to approve the extension of it. But it is a software that is actually on the EDC website that allows consumers or anybody wanting to be a business owner to go and find properties in the city. Inventory in the buildings. They can look up their sewer, water and electric lines. Investors, show current labor boards, consumer expenditures, housing data, and many more. I do want to point out that we, I put it in the packet, though, they submitted the kind of scope of services and. Sorry, and the cost, it is $9,000, but EDC negotiated with them and it only cost them $8,100. We will put out the $5,000 from LITA funds and the EDC will pay the remaining $3,100 per year in the three-year contract. So this will be the initial year and it'll end in 2025 with the request to extend the project if we want to.
This software, this software is available pretty much to any of the entities and everybody, so. Just wanted to get that.
Yes. Like I said, it's on the EDC website. That's where it is.
All right.
So who updates the toolbox?
I believe they work with Evelyn, but we'll see if it's.
And how often is it updated? That might be my question.
That is.
Because it needs to be updated for it to be beneficial.
I have.
It's on this. Right here.
We seem to have a discussion with that one, I guess, to reach.
Yeah, that's, that's an EDC.
And I'm fine with it. It's just, it's something that toolbox needs to be updated. It needs to be updated quarterly, whatever. You know, whenever something else is added to it, so it can give people accurate information when they're looking for.
And that's what I can answer, I wanted to do, to update it.
It's imperative to have that done because if you're paying for something and it never gets updated, what good is it doing?
I'll ask Evelyn to do it, to work with the software.
Okay. Any further discussion? Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Danny?
Yes.
Mayor Ron.
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioner, I'd make the motion to pass Resolution 2022-069 steps in seeking permission. Appointed board and commissions and observe holidays for July 2022 to 2023.
Motion and second for approval of resolution. Any discussion?
Did you put it in?
Shannon.
Shannon. It's just something we do every year to update our meeting dates for the boards and the commission meetings, as well as holidays for the business year.
Great question. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I have one question on that, and I just recalled it right now as I made the motion after I made the motion. It said. Does any of the holidays fall on a Saturday or Sunday? Because we tend to recognize them and they tend to get paid for that Saturday. And then turn around, get paid for on a Monday, and we have to take the day off on Monday.
If the holiday falls Saturday, do you take that Friday?
That Friday.
If it falls on Sunday, we take that Monday. Like Christmas.
Be understood by the board that that does happen because does it happen in our calendar, our next calendar year? Would that happen? I didn't look at it.
Christmas, I think.
Christmas.
Yeah.
It's the same on Friday. It's Tuesday.
I think this last year, we had like two fall on, and everybody was kind of getting upset because, so why is everybody at home? Well, it was a holiday and had to go home or then.
Well, we had reduced hours and everything else, which was.
Well, they got Thursday afternoon, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah.
And then Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
Shannon, my question is, the two floaters, how do you determine? That's what it stated, what?
That's just two floaters. They're personal days.
Okay, so each, each employee can ask for those. It's not, we don't set them as some other Columbus Day or another one we. Any further discussion? Not. Roll call.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Danny?
Yeah.
Yes. Next time.
I think mostly, Mayor, Commissioner, I'll make the most when we pass Resolution 2022-070 approval of the MOU between the City of Lovington and New Mexico Main Street program and Lovington Main Street.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second on approval of this resolution. Discussion.
It's basically $35,000.
Are you here?
Yeah, I can take it. Our Motta is here too. But it's not, I just want to point out, it's not additional funding. It's, it's going to be the $35,000 that we just approved. And it's just a MOU for them to obtain or do their affiliate.
The state charter, whatever you are.
New Mexico Main Street affiliation.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Danny?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Ron.
Yes.
Before you go to your next.
Okay.
I attempted Evelyn and asked her, and she said the company is the one who updates it, and she knows they do it every year for sure. People ask if they will start doing it for her. Just so we don't have any say in it, hopefully.
Just we have a say.
Well, as far as. That's going in there to fix things. They do that. We have to approach them and say, can you adjust this?
I know sometimes things don't happen accordingly. They might happen once or twice a year, so as long as they're updated.
Especially without scrubber, we shouldn't shoot it to them like every time it changes. Okay.
All right, now, next time.
Make a motion for council people?
Oh.
Second.
We have a motion and second for the approval of council table discussion. Sorry, I'm getting through that.
The, the, I can pull down the larger this time because you're in for me to, because we just do one last commission meeting. And I hope we're doing the end of the year, so there's extra two. And there are larger items as well, because it is the end of the year.
Who's the payment?
I don't think it's anyone. Yeah. It was supposed to be one of the. So it was kind of.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, because it uses some office thing all the time. Neither than the water.
I've seen a lot of. Payment for police windshields. Is that because of the hail?
So that's because of the hail, and I'd like to point out to the commission that there's approximately $30,000 in expenses for the police department on these two bills. Which are either COVID-funded or LEPF-funded through the state. And for those cars, that is hail damage, and the problem, we spent about $5,000 out of LEPF for that because the deductible on each vehicle is $1,000. So some of them were too old to have total coverage, so we just paid that LEPF.
I know this is probably not a good question, but with it being a municipality, is there any way to have an umbrella blanket that would be coverage for all the vehicles? Instead of just the individual vehicle, you know, as far as the deductibles? And I know it's.
Actually, I have, not on vehicles, but I'm currently investigating that on the routes on all the buildings. I just got copies on Friday, so the next commission meeting. And by that time, we will have completed the insurance assessment. So probably at the next meeting, we'll have a complete assessment of, yes, they do, they have it on buildings. I don't know whether they have it on cars or not.
And that's why I just wanted to ask if it's something that we could look into, that if it happens again, you know, like your comprehensive coverage, this covers your windshield, you know. So maybe it's just an individual vehicle. That's the way it's going to be. But if there's a possibility of having an umbrella blanket where it's all covered, that would be great, but I don't think the insurance companies would like it. So, but some of the, just to look into to see if it's there. Because these hailstorms, we might start getting them more frequently.
Mr. Mayor members of the commission, we met with the consultant and she indicated that that is available, but it's going to be that impossible.
Right.
She did offer a Nebraska for.
Okay.
The other problem is it's like on buildings. The, to start, our deductible is $100,000. So we would have, that's on the bill, so we'd have enough damage to warrant that. So it's catastrophic is what you're looking at, one, as we had in earlier in the year. Then, yeah, that's what it's covered, but if, let's just say we had a hailstorm and we got two or three, then we're going to eat that.
Yeah, yeah. And as I said, just something to look into, so. Well, thank you. There was another one that I seen Scott's.
Place.
Place, as far as for the air conditioners, you see, it'd be, one is off one penny, but two of them are the same price. Is that for three individual air conditioning units?
Oh, oh. With senior citizen center, they have to divide theirs up into three different categories. So it, in the system, it'll say con, I can't say that word. Delivery. Yes, they have to, they have to divide theirs, most of them, especially when they're big, bigger price like that too. But it was the same one. It was divided into three different.
Okay, I didn't know. I just wanted to ask on that because I'd see if the little, two of them were the exact same.
And then so, yeah, if it's all five penny because divided by three.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Yep, no, thank you.
All right, I guess, thank you. Appreciate you. All right. We have a motion and a second on the board. Yes, for the approval. Adam?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, exhausted the items of the agenda, meeting of the.
Yay.
Good job.
Seven fourteen. He's a new regular.